Next item on the agenda. You ready? Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Finance Committee Report. I'm assuming Carl's going to do that.
All right. I am. So this morning, we met via Zoom. And it's pretty much the same report that it's been for a long time. Our state subsidy has been received and recorded. Our town revenues have all been received and recorded. Operating revenues continue to exceed our expenditures for the month. Expenses are in line with the budget. Food service expenses continue to exceed revenues. We'll catch up as the year has gone on. And keep giving credit to those folks. Sam Wedgwood, Sue Day, the whole team. Doing a wonderful job with food service. Our revenues are catching up and will continue to do so. And adult ed expenses are in line with revenues exceeding expenses. Another great financial month.
Thank you. Any questions? Moving right along, Construction, Transportation, and Safety. Is there a question? Nancy, go ahead.
On Article 4, only 29% has been extended on that. Can you tell us what that is?
Absolutely. Other instruction typically are extracurricular activities, coaching, athletics. We typically do it in chunks of third. Winter seasons haven't ended yet, so we haven't cut that chunk yet. So when the winter season ends, you'll see more expenditures out of that line.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Construction, Transportation, and Safety.
We reviewed some construction projects today. Elementary school, the curtain to separate the gymnasium has been installed. However, we are still waiting on the motor to complete the process. It is on its way. The new water filling station has been installed in the gym at the elementary school also. The high school, the Construction Committee approved a student request to paint words above the gym door. They will say positive energy, pursuit of excellence, and love with the popsicle. The district LED sign that was broken has been repaired. John Zabranjes and his team did a great job troubleshooting the program, the problem with the antenna module. We installed a new walking floor at the high school. Also installed new dishwashers at the high school and elementary school. We are seeking input on how to best repair the high school track. The following projects will come from ESTER funding. There will be three outdoor structures installed, one in each school for outdoor learning. We will determine the exact location in the near future. We reserve you plans for a new outdoor court, tennis, basketball, and pickleball. Our next meeting is March 2nd at 10:00 a.m.
I'd like to just add, Nancy has a question. You can go first, Nancy. Oh, okay. Sort of an important discussion topic tonight, and I'm not sure that we need to settle it this evening, but I thought it was a great conversation with our Construction Committee. So the outdoor court, important to note, the outdoor court and the three structures are ESTER funding, COVID money for additional spacing for physical education and outdoor classes to get kids outside. So that's not from local taxpayer dollars, just to be super clear for anybody watching on TV. But the conversation was around use of those courts and use of the ice rink and use of things to track on school ground at school times when our kids are in school. So it's sort of a two-sided coin, right? So we do everything with safety and security, and we try and keep people off grounds. And we practice our lockdown drills and our Alice training. Yet we invite people to our school to use these courts and facilities when our kids are using them. So the question is, what the Board would like to do. I think the conversation around construction, and no one put words in their mouth, was all of these types of things, i.e. the ice rink, the two tennis courts, basketball courts, our track should be off limits to our community during the school day from 7:30 to 2:30 while our kids are in school. They felt like practice was different. That's like an extracurricular, and it'd be hard for a community to use the track when a track team's practicing anyway. It probably just kind of take care of itself. But I think most people on construction felt like we shouldn't have people using our school grounds, playgrounds, any of those kinds of things during the school day while our kids are here the 175 days. If the Board's ready to talk about that, I'd love to have that discussion. I think the only thing really in play right now, our tennis courts obviously are pretty snowed under, as is our track. I think it would just be the ice rink. And if the Board felt that way, I would call and let Rec know that just during school hours, please don't use the ice rink. But any other time, of course, feel free. I don't know if that feels reasonable. I don't know if you want to talk about it. I don't know if you want to think about it and get back to me at the February 16th meeting. I don't want to put you on the spot, but I thought it was an awesome discussion with Construction this morning. I just wanted to share it with all of you. Hang on. I think Becky's, if you don't mind, Allison. Do you mind, Miss Combers? Thanks.
Are students using that ice rink at all during the day? Or is that something that they don't go on during the day?
I don't believe, I think we have snowshoeing and those kinds of things. I'm not sure that they're on the ice rink during the day, no.
Is anybody being on there? Would they like during recess, does it come in contact with students or cross paths?
I think it would be possible, maybe if kids went out towards horizons or if kids went to snowshoe in the open field, that they would walk past someone on the ice rink. It's conceivable, Allison, yes.
I just think that seems like a reasonable request in the light of school safety that we wouldn't encourage people to come on school grounds during the school hours. Any other time, I would concede.
And while you're walking back here before, oh, Cindy, I didn't hear her. I don't mind. You go right ahead.
Well, I was actually going to disagree, so I don't know what to do now. But there's so many kids homeschooling and elderly and other people in our community that didn't come in contact with the kids. I mean, if it was just like an off chance, happenstance, I guess it wouldn't really bother me to allow the community to use it. But make it best, just my opinion.
And just to...
The playground, like playground, like absolutely not playground anywhere near the kids, but it's not a lot to do for people in the community outside right now. It's not near anybody. Doesn't bother me.
So the thing, the other thing I just wanted to mention, I don't think it's a super big issue. I don't see a ton of people at these facilities during the school day anyway. I think people are pretty respectful of this. But I thought the Construction Committee had a great idea. There's, it has to be criteria about how to use these things and how to use these facilities. It's around the new court. And I just think we ought to have a deal that either you can or can't use them during the day, and then we'll enforce that. Like I said, I don't think there's hundreds of people climbing over themselves to use the tennis courts or ice rink. But just we ought to be consistent with our rule and post said rule, whatever that is.
So we want to make a decision tonight, want to think about it, and bring it back on February 16th?
I think Nancy said postpone till the, not postpone, but think about it, mull it over, and come back on the 16th with thoughts. In the meantime, I think, I think the ice rink is available for use. I think Rec has, just to be clear to this Board, I think there might be a little bit of use of the ice rink by Rec during school day. I'm not saying it's a huge amount, but just know if we put it to the 16th, totally fine. There might be a little community usage of our ice rink, just so everybody is aware.
Okay, we'll put it on the agenda then for February 16th. If you didn't hear me, we'll put it on the agenda for February 16th. Thank you. Next item is curriculum, and that will be the student report. Oh, Mary, sorry, Maggie.
Could you just tell us what this outdoor structure, just simply, does it have a roof?
Yep. So I'll take this one, Maggie. So, boy, I'm not the best builder, but I imagine it's like six by six. I don't know if that's the right size. West, pressure-treated, some kind of things with a metal roof. It won't have any walls, just post on sonar tubes with metal roof. So if a teacher wants to take their class out, out of the weather, we'll put some chairs out there, you know, as the weather gets nicer, so kids can have class outside at every school. No walls or anything like that. You're welcome.
Hey, everyone. Hope you're doing okay. We actually have a lot of exciting news to report tonight. Sophomores Hannah Mason and Lexi Sarette both received Silver Key Awards for their artworks submitted to the 2022 Maine Regional Scholastic Art Awards. Their work was selected out of entries from hundreds of students across the state and will be part of an upcoming virtual exhibition. Their work is pictured at the bottom of this page. Well, it's actually the next page. We'll flip it over. Congratulations to both Hannah and Lexi.
We also want to congratulate our own Haley Capano, who received the NPA Principals Award for Academic Excellence and Citizenship. This award is given by the NPA to one senior that is nominated. This award is a huge honor. Her name will be featured on a plaque in the high school along with the past nominees.
Finally, our winter sports teams are wrapping up the regular seasons with under two weeks left until playoffs kickoff. The cheerleaders' next competition is on Saturday, February 4th, at Lewiston High School. Good luck to our winter Hawk sports teams. And with that, I'm heading up to cheer, guys. Have a good night.
Is this the artwork?
Yeah.
So you have a picture of the artwork in your packet? So curriculum report, Jolene.
The Fine Arts Team at SAD 55 made an excellent presentation of their work with students. They first showed a video from the Americans for the Arts, which highlighted the benefits to students in classes in the arts in terms of success in school and in life. Video noted that students of lower socioeconomic status who take classes in the arts have a drop-off rate of 4% versus the rate of 22% for those who do not. Arts teachers in the elementary and middle schools, middle schools expressed that the child is the artist with their own ideas and that the classroom is the child's studio. In the high school, the following classes are offered. Art I, Advanced Art Painting, Ceramics I and II, Sculpture, Digital Photography I and II, Video Production, TV II, and Yearbook. Drama classes in high school include Acting I, Improvisation, Advanced Acting, Technical Theater, Stage Craft. Because of COVID-19, music teaching at the elementary school has stressed percussion rather than singing. Middle school music includes general music, band for grades five through eight, and after-school chorus for grades four through eight. Teachers emphasize that music is for everyone, not just those who want to perform. High school students have available band and chorus, and they are able to develop skills both as an ensemble and individually. The program is built, is being built up for months of remote and hybrid instruction. Teachers' hopes and dreams are twelve. Music electives at the high school, for example, history of rock and roll, jazz, hip-hop. Consistent scheduling and time for individual lessons in band and chorus. A full-time music teacher at the high school and elementary school. Full-time visual arts teacher at the elementary school. Expand visual arts electives at the high school, for example, graphic design, animation, and illustration. And expand theater to the elementary and middle schools. Our next meeting is February 9th at 3:00 p.m.
Thank you. Any questions for Jolene?
I was impressed with that presentation by the art department. And one of the things that, two of the things that really impressed me is number one, they do not call their classroom a classroom. They call it a studio, which I thought was an excellent choice of clarification of what they're doing. And the second thing is, if you have a chance, please take a look at the packet that you have and read about SAKP along with and what the art that we provided for them did to them and their growth and what. Very impressive.
Our next report is from Lake Region Vocational, and that will be for the January 14th meeting.
So, yeah. I hope this, anyway, I forgot to go. I was at home, didn't go anywhere else, just forgot to open up the computer. And so Britt put a pretty good, an excellent rendition of what happened at the meeting, so you can all read it on your computer. I promise I'll be there next time.
Thank you. Your next meeting is March 1st. Policy committee. We have an excellent meeting on January 12th. We reviewed GBE, GB, to make sure that we're all set for the second reading, which we are going to be doing tonight, and we agreed it was okay. JK Student Discipline, JKE Expulsion of Students, JKE-R Expulsion Guidelines. And those are on tonight for a first read. We already have agenda, thank you to Sue Day, for our February meeting, which will be reporting child abuse and neglect. Title-one parent involvement policy at the elementary school. Title-one parent involvement policy at the middle school. Physical restraints and weapons. So we have a full agenda for our February meeting. So I, consideration to approve the following policies as first reading. JK Student Discipline, JKE Expulsion of Students, JKE-R Expulsion Guidelines. Question before we begin, Nancy?
Yes. So I'm reading those. I'm not able to pull it out, unfortunately, because we're down here. We're not going to be able to have everybody look at it. But on JK Student Discipline, on the very last paragraph, I'm going to pull it up. So I can read it to everybody, but this is not, not a good way to do this. I apologize. I didn't think that we were going to this far. So in the very last paragraph of this... In the very last paragraph, it says, "To reduce disciplinary problems and the potential for violence in the schools, the superintendent slash designated may develop procedures for conflict resolution, which may be accomplished through peer mediation, counseling, parent involvement, services of community agencies." You only list, you listed four things. When you take out any other appropriate actions, you've closed the door. So when you leave that wording like other appropriate activities, if something new comes along or there's some other action that you want to take that does not fall under peer mediation, counseling, parent involvement, or community service, you've shut yourself up. So what's suggesting to everyone is that you keep other appropriate activities in that sentence.
So other appropriate activities be ended at the end of that.
It stays there, so you haven't closed yourself totally out yet.
Okay. Everyone agree with that amendment to the policy?
Everybody. Go into your actions so that you can look a lot of different directions. Not necessarily just those four.
It's hard, just so we're clear, is it just a thumb, that sound reasonable? Keep other actions? It looks like you have everybody, Nancy. You're rolling.
See if I can get into the other one. So under JKE-R. So, let me get under 3C. Under 3C, which is conducting the hearing. It says, "The hearing officer will inform the students and parent slash legal guardians of their rights." And what has been deleted is to have an attorney or other representation. But when you go to JKE, it does have a clear. So why don't you have continuity between the two documents? I'm going to make a suggestion that you leave to have an attorney or other representation under C, on number 3C, in JKE-R. So then it's the exact same concept that is in JKE. You don't have contradictory things. What you've done now is made contradictory. If you leave that bullet, they are, they match.
Yeah, that makes sense, and they shouldn't mirror each other.
Yeah.
Yeah. Everyone okay with that?
I'm good.
Thumbs up? Thank you. Any other suggestions? Thank you, Nancy. Any other comments, suggestions?
Thanks for reading them, Nancy.
So we have these three policies. So I would like to take a motion to approve them for the first read. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you.
Sorry. We already had Jolene and Brad as motion and second. That was just discussion, so you didn't need a new motion and second. But maybe Brad and Diane will be kind enough to motion and second the next thing we do, and then it won't be writ. So first one was, just to be clear, Jolene motion, Brad seconded. Everybody approves the first three still, I assume? Yes, regardless?
There were changes made, so that's why I did a motion.
Yeah, so, I think we're good?
Yeah.
All right, good. Sorry, number two?
So consideration to approve the following policies as a second read and adoption. GB, GB, Workplace Bullying.
Brad, Diane.
Any questions? Anybody with that? Go ahead, Nancy.
So one of the things that we had a conversation about the last time we looked at bullying was what do we do for this student who is bullied? You know, not the, how about he's the perpetrator? Not the person who causes the bullying, but the student who is bullied or intimidated. And I thought we had a pretty good discussion about that. When I was looking at this policy, I did not see anything that preface. This basically seems to be a policy dealing with employees and not students. So is there another one that we looked at?
Yeah, this is...
Now, do you remember that?
Yeah, we have another one, yes. This is workplace, yeah, absolutely.
So we have another one that's coming to us about, because I'm really concerned about that one.
We have a multi-step process that our administrators take in the case of student bullying. Yes, for sure.
So if we can see that policy sometime, I'll look into that.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
We ready to vote? All those in favor of the second read for Workplace Bullying, please raise your hand. Thank you. Superintendent's Report.
So the first thing I'd like to go over is the, probably the most complicated thing. At our last meeting, we did a vaccine or test mandate for our staff. The Board voted, and thank you for your voter support. The conversation was that BOSH, Bureau of Safety and Health in Maine, was going to meet on January 18th to enforce the OSHA standard that it would be vaccine or test in the workplace. Probably you've seen, or maybe you haven't, the Supreme Court did not support the emergency standard to vaccine or test in the workplace for large businesses. I think President Biden has withdrawn the vaccine or test in large businesses, 100 employees or more. However, when I consulted legal counsel about all those actions, it is still possible that vaccine or test happens in workplaces of 100 or more. There's certainly no harm, and you do have the right as a Board to have a vaccine or test mandate here in our school district. So the right is certainly yours. And this may be another thing, Nancy, that we take a minute and think about till February 16th. Just to give you the updated progress on it, our staff was unbelievable. They have been throughout the entire COVID deal. We're keeping kids in school. We're educating kids. Our staff has gone above and beyond, I think, our families and our kids. We've had a really, really successful year in tough times. They stepped up and did this. We either have cards or testing for our regular staff members at this point. So you don't have to tell me tonight, or you can tell me tonight. You can keep that in place in our district. I can tell you right now, we're already doing it. We've enacted it. It's rolling here. So if you want to keep it, we'll keep it in the off chance that it does come back, because it may be harder to undo and then redo. But if you say, Carl, the Supreme Court said no, Biden's pulled it, and you don't want to do it anymore, that's fine with me, too. I will literally do whatever you tell me to do as a district. So you might need time to think about this, and that's fine. And we can do it on the 16th. Or you might have your answer right now tonight, and that's fine. And I'll do whatever you, right now you voted, so it's in place. So if you do nothing tonight, we'll just keep it till our next meeting. If you want to undo it tonight, you don't have to reconfirm. It's already confirmed. So I guess the only thing to do tonight would be if you felt like undoing it. I just wanted to give you all the facts as I knew them, and you can discuss certainly now if you'd like.
From a logistical standpoint, if you did say we're going to stop, and then something happened and we had to reinstate it again, what would change? What would have to be done from circumstance to circumstance?
I would say the permission slips for pool testing have been signed. I'd say new employees, right now we're currently collecting one or the other. So if we stop doing it for new employees, we just have to take note of who we didn't do it for. And I guess just re-update our list. So I don't think it would be a tremendous workload, Allison, if you repealed it.
Okay.
To get it back, reenacted, I don't think it would be tremendous, no.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's true.
Anybody else? So we leave it in place? I saw a lot of people shaking their heads, yes. Do you want to leave it in place then? Yes, thumbs up? Leave it in place?
We have one thumb down, but I don't know. Two thumbs down.
Two thumbs down.
Three thumbs down. So thumbs up are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. 10, three, eleven, three, or an abstain, Allison, eight? Yes, 11, three. So I think we, and we can always talk about this on the 16th, team. That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent's Report.
So my other piece is just reporting things that you can read, but maybe for the folks watching. Shani Kachalini, Special Education Technician at Salkville Valley Middle School. We're super thankful to have Shani join our team. We had two coaching resignations. Melissa Cox from Middle School Baseball and Michael Winslow from Middle School Softball. So we'll be looking for those positions when the field's clear off of all the snow they have. And two retirements. So I'd like to give a heartfelt thank you to Sandy Ward, our Special Education Director, who's retiring effective in June, as well as Eileen Lee, Speech and Language, who is retiring effective at the end of the school year. So I want to thank those two for their many years of service to SAD 55. We really appreciate their hard work and effort here. Oh, you go right ahead, yeah.
So the next action item is consideration to approve a graduation date for the class of 2022. And I'm sure you have some suggestions.
I do have some detail before we just move a blank graduation date, yes. So that with the senior advisors, the class advisors, as well as the building administrators. I think this year and probably for many years to come, it's pretty straightforward. So we're looking at Friday night, June 10th at 6:00. I'll say that again, Friday night, June 10th at 6:00. Definitely outdoors on the game field. We'll turn lights on if necessary, because we'll definitely need a rain date of Saturday, June 11th at 6:00. You should think, at this point, bringing people inside, that volume of people is not super viable. So it'll have to be outside. So we have to have two nights back to back in case it rains. If we have two nights of rain in a row, someone's going to ask me. Please don't ask, I don't know. I don't have a backup to the backup. So hopefully, one of those two nights, it won't rain. But so again, Friday, June 10th. But so again, Friday, June 10th at 6:00 p.m. as the primary, with Saturday, June 11th at 6:00 p.m. on the game field, graduation date.
So I had to change the motion. Diane, and then Owen. Voting on graduation. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Thank you, everyone. I think if you put us in executive session, and then Mr. Seadis and TB2 could shut, that would be, yes. But I think I would go to executive maybe for her. We're gonna, our next thing, Mr. Seadis, if you want to shut, we're going, perfect. Sorry. Brad had another item that he wanted to check out.
It's not on the agenda. It's something that I think needs to be looked at at some point. Other items to discuss, and that is municipal budgets. I don't know how in tune some of you are with your town budgets. I attended the Conish budget meeting. In fact, I chaired it two weeks ago. Our budget in the town of Conish is looking to go up 23%. Okay? Part of that is going to be proposed rescue unit, which obviously we need. And that's without counting any possible increases coming from us, from the schools. I just want you all to be aware, maybe you should look at your, with the exception of Baldwin, because you don't have Baldwin, a rescue unit, but with the other four towns, I would love for you all to be aware of what's going on, because it may impact the taxes of certain significant.